We're now in session. Any items from the public? Saying none, need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. On the purchase order log, do you have any questions for Tracy?
I had, I just had one thing there about the breakdown on the city's stormwater tax fees.
Yes.
They had, they have Pio Faulkner and Charlotte Prather's two separate, it's all one tract that we own, and they have us, they're billing us with two separate.
Two separate bills for it?
Two separate bills invoices for those, and I didn't think that was kosher. It should just be one for that whole property over there.
Maybe because they're two separate places on the dirt?
Yeah, and actually, the, what you call them, the Charlotte Prather where the saltwater fields are, is three times higher than the rest of the park.
Yeah, Charlotte Prather's eighteen hundred.
Yeah, and the other one's six, 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 six or something.
Faulkner's six sixty-six.
Yeah, per quarter.
Mm-hmm.
So I just hope we can check into that and see if that's, I know the new parking lots on the Charlotte Prather, so that's probably why it's high, but still.
Tracy, can you just call and question them on the way they're billing for Faulkner and also Prather? Just ask them why, how it's broken down.
Two separate, yeah.
Don't not pay it, go ahead and pay it and we'll. Prather.
That was it, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. We do have some internal budget revisions. Mr. Wyon?
Yes, sir. You have ten, as a matter of fact, most of them are by me, but we'll start with one. Randy Lilly, Department 711, they're asking for your approval to move twenty dollars from publishing to training or dues and subscriptions, so from account two twenty to account two From me, Department four twenty-eight, to move two hundred dollars from materials and supplies, which is three forty-one, to publishing, which is two twenty. The third one, also Department four twenty-eight, materials and supplies, three forty-one, to move three thousand dollars into two twenty-one, which is training. Again, four twenty-eight, this time for dues and subscriptions, to move thirty-five thousand dollars from three forty-one materials and supplies to two twenty-two publish, or dues and subscriptions. Four twenty-eight again, to move one thousand dollars from two twenty-three, which is professional services, to two thirty, which is contract services. Four twenty-eight again, to move from account one oh five to one oh eight, five thousand dollars to cover some overtime costs. Again, four twenty-eight, one thirteen, to move thirty-five hundred dollars from one oh five to one thirteen, pardon me, four oh one, to move four thousand dollars from two twenty-four to two twenty, which is publishing. And the last one, I believe, is four twenty-eight, to move fifty dollars from materials and supplies, three forty-one to two twelve, which is printing. I lied, there's a seven seventeen, to move twenty thousand dollars from two twenty-three professional services to two seventeen, which is maintenance and repair vehicles.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
A change of status, letter received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Captain Brendan Hall, effective four eight, twenty twenty, four eighteen, twenty twenty-five.
New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Joe Kinzer, prosecuting attorney for Nathan Queer and Tillo, as an assistant prosecuting attorney, effective four eleven twenty-five, with an annual salary of eighty thousand. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Joe Kinzer, prosecuting attorney for Brendan Hall, as a criminal investigator, effective four twenty-one twenty twenty-five, with an annual salary of eighty thousand. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Joe Kinzer, prosecuting attorney for Tamara McCormick, as an assistant, administrative assistant two, effective four eleven twenty twenty-five, with an annual salary of forty-five thousand. I have a letter of resignation received from the Honorable Joe Kinzer, prosecuting attorney for Ashley Halfley, administrative assistant two, effective four eleven twenty twenty-five. Commissioner Whitaker was not present for the March twenty-seventh meeting, so we can leave that in. We have a stop payment request from the county clerk's office. The county engineer has submitted bond reductions for valley storage of Inwood, grading and stormwater management, BCP file number twenty-four oh seven dash one ninety-five tied to twenty-four oh seven dash one ninety-four, twenty-one ten dash three seventy-nine, and zero two three dash one four, and twenty-three oh five dash zero two four seven, and that's LOC DX zero zero three three five one seven. Have a bond release for one oh nine Tavern Road Building Expansion, BCP file number twenty-four oh three dash zero six five, twenty-four oh three dash zero six four, twenty-two oh nine dash two eighty-seven, and twenty-three oh three dash zero one one six, and that's for grading bond number zero eight three five nine six seven. Doug Smith, our engineer, is making that recommendation as well. Have a bond release for Kimpack Building Edition, BCP file number twenty-three eleven dash three seventy-nine tied to twenty-one dash zero zero, twenty-two oh five dash one forty-six, and number two-two one zero dash zero zero four seven, as for grading, LOC will be three forty, three fifty-four. Engineer makes that recommendation. Have a bond release for Tabor Station Logistics Park, BCP file number twenty-four oh eight dash two forty-five tied to Lama Case, number twenty-four oh three dash zero eight zero, and number twenty-one oh four dash one thirty-four, and twenty-one ten dash zero zero five one, that's a grading bond, number one zero seven four zero zero seven three six, and our engineer, Doug Smith, makes that recommendation as well. If I have any questions for Doug?
Thank you, sir. Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second?
Has been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, thank you. Next up is Honorable Larry Hess, our assessor. Good morning, sir.
Morning.
Good morning.
Just got a couple this week. First of all, I have a taxpayer error that we had to bring over. They did not eliminate the vehicle off of their return, so we had to put it in as a taxpayer error. It's for three hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventeen cents.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the tax exoneration for taxpayer error in amount of three hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventeen cents.
So moved. Second?
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
No, ayes have it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one for officer personal property. We made a bill for Sofia Valdez, and should have been made, so we had to eliminate it, so had to bring it over. Two hundred and one dollars and thirty-two cents for that.
Okay, a motion to approve the personal property exoner- exoneration due to officer error in amount of two hundred and one dollars and thirty-two cents.
So moved, Mr. President. Again?
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. And I just have one for real estate exoneration. Property, you had the house that had burned, and we didn't take it off, so we had to remove the house for tax year twenty-four, and the difference in the value is one hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
One hundred and forty-one?
One, one forty-one seventy-five, yes.
All right, need a motion to approve the officer real estate exoneration in amount of one hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it.
Good, thank you.
And you have a final divorce decree.
I do, that's the last thing I have today, which would be for Jeanette and Joshua Lupicino, I think. They had two vehicles, total assessed value of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. They asked that we would split their bill so she could pay her bill, she, and he could pay his bill, so we split the bill, and he got the Forester at five thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars in assessed value. She got the Chevrolet Silverado at seventeen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, so I need your approval on that today.
Okay, I need the final divorce decree order for the assessment of the taxes as presented.
So moved, Mr. President. Second?
Been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it.
Thank you. You all have a good day.
You too. Okay, next up is our board meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
Yes, sir. I had a meeting last week after we left, had a museum board meeting that night. Things are moving along there about the same pace. They will be in here next week to give us a ten-minute presentation on what they've been working on, what they got going on. Website and email is set up right now. Email is museum@birkeleywb.org. Thanks to IT department here for helping them get that stuff set up, and they voted to accept the language and RFQ documents that will go out after the April tenth meeting next week for qualifications for, I guess, museum architects or whatnot to do drawings for the location. And they voted to approve up to five hundred dollars to put out that ad for RFQ. And that's about just in the meeting. They talked about doing some workshops online, and the members of the board doing, they were talking about doing ten to fifteen minutes each meeting, and bringing experts or do Zoom type things to educate them on different aspects of museums, how to take care of exhibits, things like that, but then ultimately it was a consensus of the group to share links, and they could investigate things they wanted to and spend as much time on it as they wanted to instead of spending time in the meeting, and maybe not getting as much out of it as they could. Some people may be more interested in different aspects of the museum, so they're going to share links and do it that way.
It's like a good way of doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's about it.
Commissioner Hardy?
No meetings this week.
Good for you.
Yeah, Monday was an extra Monday in the month, so no planning commission, no water board, and no other meetings this week, so.
And you were on Metro News this week?
I was, I was on Metro News with those gentlemen, talking a little bit about the failure of Senate Bill five oh four, which was the locality bill pay, locality bill, which basically would help growth counties, some of our border counties, with state employees basing it on our median home prices, and, but that bill was, was moved to be tabled, or it was actually moved to be moved to Senate rules, and that was the day before crossover day, so that was the, the ax for that bill. Was glad to see that with all of our local senators supported the bill, except for one senator from Hampshire did not support the bill, but, you know, that continues to be a struggle for locality pay, and will continue to be a struggle, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cullen?
Yes, sir. Last Thursday evening, after we met earlier in the day, we had our ambulance authority meeting. As of April the first of this week, Brandon Truman is now the acting director of the ambulance authority, and Brian Costello will be on for the next six months as an advisory to him, and then he'll be retiring October first, so. And some really good stuff going on there, and I wanted to discuss that with you. We had three ambulances in our fleet that were just basic life support only and not advanced life support, and as of the first of April, all of our ambulances now, all nine of them are advanced life support. And what does that mean? That means they have a paramedic on the crew that can do life support, things like defibrillation, like administering medications if necessary on-site, intubation if needed, and things like that, so I think it's a really big step forward, and Brandon wanted me to make sure that I made a comment about, it was through the partnership with Blue Ridge College that they were able to obtain a grant of higher education to make this happen, and so we want to thank them tremendously for that. And so it's just another step forward in our services, like with the firefighters last week, and now the ambulance authority stepping up even better, so. Another interesting stat that came out of that meeting, right now, our average county response time across the whole county is eight and a half minutes, and compared to the rest of West Virginia, that's wonderful. Now, that, that means we still have some that aren't as good, but it's not a bad average, to be honest with you, eight and a half minutes on any call in the county, so that's the average. The other thing I wanted to say, the non-residential fee is going well. Since January first, we've collected eighty percent of those total invoices. We put that into place the year before. That's the first time we've implemented that, and it's helped out the situation a lot. We still have seven new replacement trucks that are going to be due before the July first and should be in our fleet. We haven't received any of the seven yet, but they all should be coming in over the next several months. And another situation was interesting. Last year at this same time, we were having some overtime issues in the ambulance authority, and they have worked on that very diligently, and they've reduced that by two, two hundred and twenty-two percent, the reduction of overtime, from this time last year till now. And I commend the staff for that situation as well, so. Also, last Friday, along with Commissioner Oguni and Commissioner Boyd, we attended the Maha Press Conference down at the St. Joseph School. Very interesting, to say the least, with the governor there and, of course, RFK Junior, Secretary of Health and Human Resources, so it was quite an event, to say the least. And then this past Tuesday, we had a sewer board meeting. All, all projects are moving forward. Woods Treatment Plan is the largest project that we have going on, and it should be completed by the end of June of this year, so things are moving forward there. We had a stormwater board meeting following that. No update on our individual permit. We're through the thirty-day period to accept public comments, and the state's still procrastinating on whether to issue that permit or not. They're still saying they're going to come out with a general permit at some point. They're still saying they're going to come out with a general permit at some point. And then I wanted to mention also, I've been in communication with the Civil War Battlefield folks, hooked them up with Ken Reed. On Ken's property down in North Berkeley County, the Stonewall Jackson Memorial is located there, and they're going to work with Ken to make that more accessible to visitors in the community for parking and different things, so people can be exposed to that, particularly of interest when we get the nine oh one park built. And in regards to that, later in our meeting, when we talk about the nine oh one park project that involves the Civil War folks, I, I do have an update on that situation too, as far as the appraisal and things that are moving forward with that project. So we'll talk about that more later in the meeting. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And, and getting those ALS units, the advanced life support units in the county.
It's a big deal.
It is. And they, they provide a very high level of care. These folks are very skilled and they do an excellent job. I've seen it firsthand, so appreciate their, their work there. We do have a reappointment package received from James Marshall for the ambulance authority. Have a reappointment package received from Greg James for the building permits advisory committee, a reappointment package received from Lisa Don Polian for the health board, and a letter of resignation received from Tamara McDaniel from the ambulance authority. I only had two meetings this week, which Gary and Jack participated in. Also, we're finishing up the health department, the addition there. It's very, very nice. Projects coming in on time, on budget, and really, really a nice addition to our health department. And also, Dave Report Facility is coming along nicely on the second floor. All the studying is in, they're running HVAC and electric right now. So that, that project's moving along very nicely as well. Of course, Waynesboro, where former contractors on that building are doing that finish out of the second floor. So next up, have our honorary county commissioner. And Commissioner Catlett will have the privilege of swearing in his granddaughter.
We're going to do a fun emblem here with the flags and all, so it's going to be first class, wouldn't it? I, I can't tell you, I get all emotional. I love this kid so much. How honored I am to be able to do this today. I couldn't sleep last night, I was so excited. But I, I can tell you this, I've never been prouder of anything more in my life than this young lady here. What a wonderful child she is and what a wonderful kid she is, and just great. So I'll let her tell more about her own self. But I'm going to swear you in now. I'm going to give you an honorary coin. It's a Berkeley County coin that you'll love, and then Izzy's going to want one too, so I'll figure that out later, so. So I'm going to swear again if you raise your right hand and repeat after me, ma'am. I, Ava Daniel.
I, Ava Daniel.
Do you swear?
I do swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard.
That I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
To help me God.
To help me God.
And because she's my granddaughter, I can hug her after that, okay? Oh, there you go. Wait a minute, now you don't leave yet. You got, you got, you got to talk a little bit here. Here's your, here's your thing that you get to keep. And then I want you to tell everybody about yourself a little bit.
I'm Ava Daniel. I'm in eighth grade. I'm at South Middle School. I'm a student and fellow student. I like dance for nights a week to dance class. Next year I'll be going to a lunch party, and then, and after that to go to college and...
There you go. All right. Now, I get to expand on this. She didn't say, because she's a very humble person, not like her grandfather, but she's a straight A student at South all three years, never made anything but an A. She's a wonderful kid. She is also on the student council of itself as well, and been there for three years, correct? And she's just got a great future, and I couldn't be more proud of this kid, so thank you, sweetheart.
Does she get a second trip to Chick-fil-A today?
Yeah, she might.
Very nice way, Ava. Welcome. And if you have a question or you'd like to make a comment about something, please get my attention and...
You know your grandfather's kind of quiet. He doesn't talk a lot.
We'll hear you out. All right, next up is Will. Good morning, Will. How are you doing? Will with the wheels.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning, sir. Morning.
This morning, we have seventeen estates for final or interim settlement for the month of April, 2025. All estates proposed for settlement here this morning are identical to those found in your read ahead. Additionally, all estates proposed for settlement here this morning have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no claims of debt or objections to date from any interested parties of the estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt, as I say, have been either publicly filed against each of these estates, have been paid as released in full or in part by the creditors themselves, or the estates have been declared to be insolvent, meaning no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, and creditors alike. Without objection from any present interested party in the estate, from the audience today, I ask for this commission's consideration for the approval of the seventeen estates for final or interim settlement for the month of April, 2025.
Okay, you've heard a request from our fiduciary supervisor, the motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Then property moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes having. Thank you, Will.
My last order of business today is the estate hearing for the estate of Clarence Eugene Snowden IV. Mr. Snowden passed away on February sixteenth, 2024, intestate, a resident of Berkeley County. Mr. Snowden was divorced at the time of his passing, leaving behind two heirs at law, both of whom are minor children. On March eleventh, 2024, Deborah Marie Hill qualified as administrator of the decedent's estate, being bonded for seventy-five thousand dollars through Travelers Casualty and Insurance Company through Smith Nadenbusch Insurance here in Martinsburg. On May twenty-third, 2024, Ms. Hillth timely filed the appraisement of probate and non-probate assets of the estate, listing real property, tangible property, and intangible property as assets within probate. On June fifth, 2024, the estate, along with dozens of others, was published in the Journal Newspaper, making the deadline for creditors to file claims to expire on August fourth, 2024. Multiple claims of debt were filed during that time. On March fourth, 2025, the circuit court approved the sale of the real estate at issue, currently set, at least according to some, some of the interested parties, for April twenty-second, 2025. At some point between August fourth, 2024, and now, Ms. Hill suffered a physical injury as a result of a fall, according to her attorney, Patrick Henry, rendering Ms. Hill incapacitated and unable to fulfill her duties as administratrix. Due to Ms. Hill's recent inactivity, Ms. Kelly Kittleson, the legal guardian for both heirs, petitioned for Ms. Hill's removal as administratrix. Almost immediately after Ms. Kittleson's petition was filed, Ms. Hill responded by counsel, agreeing to step down as administratrix, as being in the best interest of the estate and the estate's heirs. Without objection from any present interested party, I ask for this commission's consideration on allowing the removal of Deborah Marie Hill as administratrix for the estate of Clarence Eugene Snowden IV.
So did, or you want to do that separately, a separate motion to remove?
That is correct.
And then another one to reappoint?
Well, I mean, the appointment would be on Ms. Kittleson herself. She does wish to be appointed, although that involves taking an oath. That's going to be an affirmative action upon Ms. Kittleson. So I would be, I think all we need is the removal of Ms. Hill.
Got you. Okay, need a motion as requested by fiduciary chairman or supervisor to remove Deborah Marie Hill as the administrator of the estate of Clarence Snowden.
So moved. Second.
Proper move and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes having.
I'll have an order for you later this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. All right, next up, Jennifer Swisher, Director of 911 Emergency Communications, along with Mr. Christopher Fincham, Chairman of the 911 Advisory Board Committee. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us here today. Today we are presenting the Emergency Communications Advisory Board bylaws. Chris is with us. He is the, again, the chairperson of the 911 Advisory Board. And since its inception back in September of nineteen ninety-seven, there has not been bylaws in the 911 Advisory Board. So we worked under Chris's direction. And so I'm going to let him talk a little bit about the board and about the...
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chris. As you probably know, the 911 Advisory Board is represented by each stakeholder in public safety. And so, like Jen said, we meet four times a year, and since the board has been inception, we have not had any bylaws. I was nominated last year for chairperson, and so between Jen, myself, Randy Lilly, Sean, we had a committee that decided we needed to get these bylaws in, in place. And so we set up the committee and we looked at other bylaws throughout the state, kind of took a little bit of pieces of everything from everybody else had. And we are here today to ask for the approval of the bylaws so we can get them in, in order.
Has Anthony y'all reviewed those, I assume?
Yeah. I sent them to Chad a month ago when he looked at them.
Well, it's been quite a delay in getting them here. But it, but it is important to have that kind of a roadmap for that organization to follow and term limits and all that kind of stuff that is put into the constitution bylaws or your bylaws. Does anybody else have any questions on them?
No, I'd just like to thank them for working to put those in place. I think the problem sometimes, what happens in local government is when there's not policies in place. So when you have those steadfast policies in place, the policy is the policy, and so you don't have those gray areas where people can get confused. So I, I appreciate you taking the time for this undertaking to put these bylaws in place and have a, a good roadmap to, to work towards in the future. And if any problems do arise, and we've got a clear structure here to follow. So thank you very much for your time and effort.
Very good. So I need a motion to approve the bylaws as presented.
So moved, Mr. President. Second.
They're properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes having. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, Chris. We're kind of running a little bit ahead of schedule. You, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Would you be ready for your interview?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll come on forward and we won't, we won't make you sit here alone. You need to...
Oh, that's good. This is the last one. I want to apologize for that.
That's all right.
I, Steve called me and the email guy sent in my junk mail.
Okay.
And that's how I missed. I apologize to counsel.
No worries.
Yeah.
Welcome to have you, and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, yeah, I've been a Berkeley County resident all my life, been in the orchard business for fifty-some years. I was fourteen years old, I rode my bike to the orchard and got a job. Should have voted to a bank. But anyhow, that's, I've been in the farming community all my life, and when I retired, I wanted to do something, and was talking to Bobby and Corla, and they said this position was coming up. Thought it'd be interesting. So that's why I'm here.
Very good. Well, we're always looking for good people, that's for sure. And I've, I've heard of your name for quite a long time.
It's all been good.
It's all been good, yes, sir. So I'd like to start off with Commissioner Catlett.
But you haven't heard it as Garland Elliott.
No, no, no. No, it's always been Pudd, that's for sure.
There's only three Garlands that I ever knew in Berkeley County. Garland, Sensen Diver, my father-in-law, Garland Barges, who everybody called Mule. Nobody knew his real name, and this has always been Pudd, so no Garland, but... Of course, I've put in a, I've known Pudd forever, and Hedgesville guy, and, and of course, he involved with the rec program, coaching and refereeing and all that stuff over the years, so. And he's got a feel for the, obviously, the farming industry and the apple, the orchard industry here in the county by doing that his whole life, so. Is there anything that you think needs to be done, Pudd, maybe that we haven't been doing, or do you just make it feel that out of the way?
I'll be honest with you, I've, I've followed it some, but working so much, I haven't been able to follow. I know what it's, the farm protection is about, and it's a great program, and I just want to be involved in it now that I have some time. And I'm not very technology, but my wife is. That's how she found the, the email that I missed. But, you know, it's something I can do, and we, you know, we're both retired now, and we want to do something in the community, so.
I appreciate that. His son is probably the best golfer in, in the history of Berkeley County, to be honest with you. You wouldn't believe...
He didn't get that from me.
No. But I'll tell you, he, he was an amazing golfer, and he grew up in the rec program, but he gave up other sports at the golf more.
Yeah, he did.
Paid dividends for it.
His work stands hard.
Yeah. But I don't have anything else to add to it.
Very good. Commissioner Boyd.
Yeah, my question's pretty much what Steve would have asked there, and I just appreciate you coming out and trying to help with the community. You know, it's hard to find good volunteers, and, you know, we appreciate you signing up to, to do this.
Well, you know, as you go out through Hedgesville, you remember all the orchards, and now it's townhouses and homes, and the orchard I just got done with last year, it's all being pushed out now.
All the trees are being taken down now.
As we speak, the last...
It's on Ridge Road, Ridge Road, or Apple, Apple, what's it called?
There's just new trees, and then it's just...
I grew up in the middle of...
What's it called?
Apple, Apple Knolls, isn't it?
What's that?
Developmentary, Apple Knolls.
The orchard I had was Rosemary Orchard. It was...
I mean the development there that Coker put in.
Oh, yeah. It was Red Hill, but...
That's, that's Craig Blair's family's orchard.
Senator Blair's, that's their family that has that orchard. And I'm, my wife is related to them, and that's how I, I've been farming that piece of ground probably for, I don't know, twelve, twelve, fourteen years. And the interstate is just terrible. The last two years, we've been relying on the, a bailout from the government and stuff, and I'm, I'm not going to work like that. I, you know, I was expecting the processors to be here, and I was a processor farmer. I wasn't a packer, so we was relying on national fruit and Nals and all them, and they don't need our apples now.
Yeah, there's a lot of orchards facing that same battle.
Yeah. And I'm at the point in my life where that, you know, I don't need it. We've had, you know, the orchard business has been really good to us, and me and my wife just decided it was time to get out.
Right. Ain't many left in Berkeley County.
No, it's not, and it's a shame, because it's a way of life that our future generations won't know about.
Right.
Yep. I grew up in the middle of the Porterfields Orchards there.
Yeah.
Right there off of, right by the interstate and Route nine exit.
Well, when I was a kid, that was the only, the only job you could get was in the orchard, you know? That's how I ended up starting.
Well, I would have starved to death working in the orchard.
All them apples, you can eat.
I couldn't pick them fast enough. I, I built hay all my life, you know, when I was, when I was young. I went from farm to farm, but I picked cherries one day, and I soon figured out I wasn't going to make enough money.
Yeah, it's a hard life, it is.
Then peaches, then peaches one season, that's tough.
My grandfather did that his whole life.
Yeah, cherry trees on the Porterfield Orchard. I picked cherries for two weeks and made twenty dollars in two weeks. Worked every day.
Yeah.
It was crazy.
Commissioner Hardy.
Just want to say thank you for your willingness to serve. So it's great to have people that are willing.
Hopefully I can do a good job, and I'll be there and I'll be lookout for the farmers, that's for sure.
Well, I love, longtime, lifelong...
You are a member of the Conservation District, correct?
Yes.
Yes, you are a member for sure. Just verify.
I've been a Farm Bureau member for 50 years. I served on the Farm Bureau Board, on the Farm Credit Board. I served one term there.
And this whole Conservation District, you're on that as well, though?
Yeah. Yeah. That's how Bobby and Carla asked me if I'd be invested and that's how I got...
Yeah, we filled the Farm Bureau spot last week with a young man from the South End.
Louis Talbot.
Louis, yeah, Louis Talbot. Thank you for coming in.
All right. I was going to say I apologize for missing the meeting two weeks ago.
No worries. We'll be in touch with you between now and next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're way ahead of schedule. We'll go take a break.
Get to take a picture with Ava.
Yeah, get a picture so she can go...
All right, we're back in session. Next up, Gary Wine, County Administrator for a resolution on a transfer of opioid settlement funds.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you. As you, as you know, the county commission has committed to using the opioid funds for purposes of debt, to service debt service for the expansion of the day report center, as well as leveraging the opportunity on occasion to reimburse yourself for regional jail fees. So you have in front of your resolution to transfer one million, one hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-six cents out of the opioid account into your general operating budget. That consists of half of your debt service for your current fiscal year, because you haven't paid the whole thing, so you can't reimburse yourself, and the better part of eight hundred thousand dollars for regional jail fees. If you'll remember, we currently are trending over budget on your regional jail fees, so we've only done it when necessary. So in order to, to make, or to make your regional jail account whole, I'm proposing that you move those funds over. So you'll, that's half of your projected, that is actually half of the debt service for the building that's already been paid, and then the rest would go into your regional jail account, to make, to give you enough money to make it through the current fiscal year.
Very good, thank you. Okay, I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
No move.
Second?
Properly moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have just a couple of questions. So Gary, what we're saying is, is we're transferring this money over from our opioid settlement money that, that's not the money that comes from the West Virginia First Foundation. This is the settlement money, right? And then, so that is used to pay the debt service to the Judicial Center.
Yes, sir.
For the Day Report Center.
Yes, sir.
What, what is the estimated years out that we plan on receiving those funds?
So originally, it was like ten to thirteen years.
Right.
They now have a projection that it'll be within ten. That's all up in the air, and they kind of set a schedule for what it looks like for what you're going to get, but none of that's carved in stone.
Right.
So at least, I would say, eight more years at a minimum now. This is year two.
And how many years will it take us to pay off the debt service for the?
Well, it's a twenty-year bond.
Okay.
So you have a call in ten, so you're not, serves no purpose to pay in advance.
Right.
Doesn't do you any good, so that, you borrowed that bond money at three point seven-nine or something like that.
Good rate.
So it was a good borrow.
Yeah, and then my next question is, we're using a portion of this for overages for the jail bill.
That's correct.
Right, so.
And that's allowable by the MOU that we're designing with this.
Sure, sure. My question is, where are we in the out years? Now, it's way out, but in the out years, when that money's gone, if our jail bill, we're using that to supplement, I mean, this, that could be a problem, problematic somewheres down the road.
Well, when it, as you get there, you know, right now, you're trying to make yourself whole on the jail bill. If you don't need it, you haven't, but this is, as you all know, your jail bill was trending high the last year.
Sure.
You're, you're way above where you were last year, in order to not borrow from like your rainy day fund or so and so. But this is just a revenue source that I knew we could reach and again.
Okay.
The, the original intent was, is that the, the projected ten to twelve million dollar settlement that you would have gotten would all be applied to the debt service and payoff.
Right.
The, the DRC expansion, clearly dipping into it and doing this, there won't be enough, so you'll have to work it in, in the out years, you'll have to work that into an expense.
Yeah.
It's about just shy of eight hundred thousand a year.
Yeah.
What the debt service is on it.
Well, and it's a shame that our jail bill is what our jail bill is, and the county is responsible for that jail bill, and now we are having to use opioid settlement money to pay our jail bills, which we, that we could be using that money for opioid treatments. It's just one more thing that the expense the state puts on the county for us to, to absorb that absorbent jail bill that our taxpayers are paying for, and, and we have the overages that we can't control. We have, we have very little control in this body.
You almost had a Z-replay.
Right, this body has very little control in that expenditure, and yet we are forced to pay for it. I just wanted to say my piece.
Thank you.
Well, and add, I'll add to that, in twenty, twenty-nine or thirty, we're going to retire some bonds as well.
Both years.
That will be paid off, that's going to free up money then to continue that beyond that point, when the opioid money's not there.
Right.
But you already have an unfunded mandate, a construction mandate.
Yeah.
To support the court expansion into the Crawford Building.
The courts, right, yeah.
That will take that debt service commitment.
Which is another unfunded mandate from the state.
Right.
Or, or greatly underfunded, let's put it that way.
But that's where we hope the impact fees will come into play then to help with that, so.
As you continue to grow, those needs will continue to be out in front of us, so we just got to figure a way to get there.
Right.
Okay, need a motion to adopt the resolution, we've done that, and need a, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, next up, surplus equipment declaration.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, you have a laundry list of equipment that lays around, the majority of it is the stuff left from the migration of the county clerk into this building out of one hundred West King, to try and get that building cleaned out, to make it nice and neat and not have it be a storage shed. That's one of the things that'll end up on your agenda here in the coming future, is what are the plans for one hundred West King Street? Some of this stuff is fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years old, non-functional desks that computers don't fit on, and stuff like that, you have. It has been gone through, and we've salvaged the stuff that we know you would use, and we have it stored, this is stuff literally that you'll never use again. To include, at the bottom of the list, three vehicles that are non-functional, twenty-nineteen Durango, a two thousand and seven Liberty, and a twenty-fifteen Taurus, those need to be declared surplus, and we'll put them on GovDeals and see, and all of this will go to GovDeals, we'll see, you just have to declare them surplus and see what kind of money we can get out of them. But you do have three semi-functional Ford Tauruses at the bottom that there's options, you know, we can GovDeal them, or if the commission has other ideas, but all of this stuff is things that your staff and for your efforts, you'll never use again.
Yeah, I know there's been some discussion, and working with delegate height in particular, of being able to surplus three of those Tauruses to counties in southern West Virginia who are struggling, McDowell County, or as it said, MacDowell County, I heard this week are on, is on the verge of bankruptcy. So you take some of the southern West Virginia counties such as Mingo and Boone, who are really struggling, if, if the pleasure of the commission to be able to help them, I'm sure would be appreciated.
Yeah, just to, to expand on that a little bit, I mean, these are ten-year-old vehicles that are no longer serviceable for our fleet, but these are vehicles that are still running, they're equipped.
They are.
They have the cages in them, they have the lights on them, they have the, the big bumpers on the front of them, they have the equipment that they need, and certainly if we can send these vehicles to another county that could, could get some more life or some use out of them, I'm one hundred percent in favor of that.
All right, need a, need a motion to approve the surplus equipment.
So move, Mr. President.
And let's conclude in that motion to detail those three Ford Tauruses to southern West Virginia counties.
Yes, Mr. President, also in the motion, I move that we will detail those three vehicles and get those ready, those vehicles ready to be sent to what, southern West Virginia, to a county or a municipality to be determined for further use.
It's been properly moved.
Second?
And second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Next up is bid recommendation for SUV.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is, you opened these bids last week, as you know, as they were opening them, I was one that, I was like, wow, those are high. Of the, the four bids you had, three met a level of the specifications, and the Nissan kick and trying to haul a prisoner across the state, it may not work. Of the ones, pardon me, the low bid was from Hagerstown Ford, and it actually was for a Ford Expedition. We reached out to, and looked into the market for the transport packages that we need to be able to move the prisoners, and they actually do not make anything for an expedition. So if the commission sees fit, we'd like for you to approve the twenty-twenty-five Chevrolet Tahoe from Whiteside. I should also mention that we advertised to purchase two, I'm recommending that we purchase one merely because with the price they came in with the outfitting costs, that would put us over budget for that. So one is better than none, what we'll end up doing is running the wheels off of that one and use one of the current ones for the shorter trips, and if the commission sees fit, it's one twenty-twenty-five Tahoe, sixty-five thousand, two hundred and seven dollars from Whiteside of St. Clairsville.
Heard the request, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
And this, this is a transport, a marshal transport?
The Civil War folks, the battlefield folks, there's a, there's a, a play afoot here that in turn, they're going to buy this property from you, they're going to buy easement on this property, and that revenue you are going to use to potentially purchase other properties further north, or reimburse yourself for expenses you had for the park. So that's what you have here. In order for them to finish it and get the full appraised value, get the, get the property done and have it appraised where it needs to be to get the money back to yourself, Parks and Recreation has come to you and said, listen, we're tapped out, we need, we need some help finishing this. Stephen, I'll, I'll let Steve kind of tell you a little bit about, because he's been in contact with the, the folks at the Battlefield Association, and kind of tell you where they've, they've laid some preemptive appraisal numbers to it, but it's not completed yet.
And so, yeah, from, from day one, before we entered an agreement with Parks and Rec and the Battlefield on this property, it was agreed that once we got title to it, we would move forward with the development of the park. They're gonna, they've already done a preliminary appraisal, and we're now at almost eight hundred thousand, but I think we can get it up to at least a million dollars, I would hope. And then on early July, first of July, they're going to submit it to the feds, and what that'll mean is, they'll, they'll pay half the appraised value back to the county, so what, we should get anywhere from four to five hundred thousand dollars, I'm hoping, from them. They will retain title then of the property through the state, West Virginia State Preservation and Historic Office, and the funds that we appropriate now will be reimbursed to the funds that we take it out of, and then we'll still have additional funds available to either put into that park or to put in the future Civil War Battlefield sites as we continue to develop these properties, so, or purchase these properties, either one, so. So it's, it's all coming together, it's been a slow process unfortunately, but it is working in, in the right direction, and I think this is going to be an unbelievable positive thing for our community, as far as attracting tourists and visitors here to our community, and we're just at the tip of the iceberg, we hope, so.
Yeah, so the two hundred thousand dollar request is really kind, just kind of a bridge until the Battlefield folks.
And it would, and, and I would recommend that you use your quality of life fund monies for this, not your operating budget, so just giving them some bridge money to finish. And correct me if I'm wrong, commission, but I do not believe that there's ever any intent to reimburse yourself for your, your commitment already.
No, no.
So this is money you're going to get back, so the, the money you gave them before, you had allocated and budgeted to make it happen, now they're coming back and saying, listen, if we could have some bridge money to get us to the appraisal, then you're good to go.
To clarify that, the, the initial three hundred and fifty thousand was ARPA money that the commission budgeted for that park, and that was before HD and I even came on board.
Correct.
And then an additional one hundred and twenty-five thousand was money that was donated by Macy's to build the pavilion down there, so that, you know, was paid for, so that didn't come out of our funds either.
That's a half a million right there.
Yeah, so there, yeah, there's four hundred and seventy-five thousand right there, but like I said, it's a, it looks really nice down there.
It does, it's nice.
It's going to be a really busy place, the Battlefield people come in, they're going to do all the signage in and out of the park and all around the park about the history of the battles and all, and it'll be cannons and fencing and different things put in, it'll be first class, and I just think it's a real plus for our community, and I hope we can develop ten more sites like this over the next couple of years, in my mind, so.
You've got about one point eight in your quality of life fund right now.
We pull two hundred thousand.
Correct.
As a bridge.
That's correct.
So I, I have a few questions, just because this all happened before I got here, and what Commissioner Catlett alluded to, even some of this started before he got here. So there was the ARPA funds that was put towards it, and then we put another, or you said someone else put up?
Macy's.
Macy's.
Hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, one hundred and twenty-five thousand towards it, so, and then, so if we get an appraisal, I guess that'd just be like a commercial appraisal, like we would have for a property, we'd get the appraisal of what the value of the park is, and then, Steve, you said that we would receive fifty percent of that back.
That appraised value.
From who?
From the National Battlefield, National Battlefield Fund.
Okay, so it's come from a federal, it's a federal fund that that comes back from.
Yes.
So we, we could potentially get a, a check for a half a million dollars, and then we could use that half a million dollars to put either whatever this, whatever the decision of this commission is, to put that two hundred thousand dollars back into our quality of life fund, or we could use that for future parks or growth or?
Purchases or property, whatever.
Quality life issues.
Mm-hmm.
Quality life issues. And John, let me further say this, before we came on board, it was approved to build a park in the north end of the county, just a public park.
Right.
And then, once we got on board, we started doing a relationship with the Battlefield folks, and they want to move into West Virginia, the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield people, they're, they're all through the, all down eighty-one, you see it, the new market especially, they want to come here in Berkeley County and recognize all these sites, and there's all kinds of sites in Berkeley County, they could be exposed to tourists and to the residents. And so this has just added a whole new twist to it, not only is it going to be a public park, but it's going to be our first ever Civil War Battlefield recognized park as well.
And what is the name of the park, is it Hoax Run?
Hoax Run Park, yeah, Hoax Run Park, that's a hoax run battle. It was, it was the first skirmage, it was the first skirmage, one of the first skirmages, maybe the first in, in the Civil War history, in sixty-one. They, the troops were headed, the northern troops, the first time they crossed the Potomac to come into Virginia, and they were headed to Manassas, and then the Confederate troops, Stonewall Jackson was involved in it, was sent there to, to slow them down, to keep them from getting to Manassas, and slow their process down, and then, what is, a week to ten days later, was the first Battle of Bull Run in Manassas, so it's quite an historic, and, and they walked right up eleven, they walked right down eleven into Martinsburg, right past the courthouse, the whole thing, the history of it all is phenomenal, so.
But just for point of clarification, and understand, there's no guarantee on that sale or the five hundred thousand or you getting your two hundred back, everybody believes it's happening, but there's nothing guaranteed.
That's right.
Sure.
Yeah, we understand.
It's well worth the risk, in my opinion.
Well, but the other thing is, we need to get this park completed, it's right, right to the end, and I'd like to have a motion to, to be able to use the quality of life funds to finish out the construction of this park.
I would like to make that motion, that we do so.
Second?
And properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Looks like your eleven-ten's going to be out of this here, it's going to be good. All right, you guys ready?
Yeah, we're ready if you guys will. All right. Hey, Gary, I had one quick question, we talked about the, the surplus equipment declaration, so that's basically, we're taking all that equipment, and does that go to like a central area and is, is sold, or is it an in-house auction, how does that work?
We use GovDeals, it's an online auction service.
Okay.
And no cost to us, so it, the cost is, it's, it's a buyer premium, not a seller premium, so you declared surplus, it's now surplus, we'll take it and put it on GovDeals, every piece.
Right, so somebody goes over, takes a picture of it, and it goes along?
Yeah, Tracy's our auction effort.
She's our auctioneer.
And we buy it, she sells it.
Tracy, Tracy's our auctioneer.
That's right, that's right.
It works really well, and that's what they're all doing now, is everything online and.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Everybody ready, roll? Everybody ready to roll?
If you don't mind, I'm going to turn the TVs on so we can.
Okay, next up, we have the Berkeley Group, and this is the Comprehensive Plan Kickoff Meeting, so welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Not well.
Hello, hello?
Yeah.
Is it on?
We're connected and presenting, it's on.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Just pull it down, further down.
Okay, it's hitting my laptop is the problem, but.
You're good.
I'll talk loudly.
Thank you.
I just don't want to shout at you.
We've been shouting before, too, so go ahead.
Take like a two-minute break while they. Yeah, let's do that. Okay, we're just going to take a couple-minute break till we get everything set up here.
That would be great.
Session. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
How are you all today?
Good. Good. You will state your name for the record, please.
I will.
Here we go.
All right. I'm Cecile Gaines from the Berkeley Group, and with me is Caroline Van Terv, and we're happy to be here for the joint kickoff for your Comprehensive Plan update. All right, so you can see the, can you see the slides?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. It's nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you, ma'am.
I just wanted to start with introductions. So as you know, your county is working with Berkeley Group to update your Comprehensive Plan, and we are a local government consulting firm. We work all with local governments and government agencies, and all of us have worked in local government. So my name is Cecile, I'll be the project manager, and Caroline will be the project lead, and we have Chris Musso and Benjamin Tripp also working on the project, and we will all be here throughout the community engagement phase of the update. So we'll all be here in the county. And if you wouldn't mind just quickly introducing yourselves, I know you have nameplates, but if you could tell us whether you're on the county commission or if we have planning commissioners here, that would be great.
Oh, HD Boyd, County Commissioner.
John Hardy, I'm County Commissioner, and I'm also the County Commissioner, liaison to the Planning Commission.
Okay, great.
Good morning, I'm Eddie Go, County Commissioner.
Steve Catlett, County Commissioner. And where are you, where's your main office and all? Where are you all from?
Well, we all work from home, we're all over the state. So I live in Roanoke, and Caroline's in Harrisonburg. Technically, we're based in Bridgewater, but we don't have an office building. We all work all over the state from home and in North Carolina.
And how many states do you work in?
Right now, I think we're in about five states, but yeah, but we're heavily Virginia, West Virginia, North Carolina. And I know I met you two on our virtual meeting.
Right.
Good to see you again.
Guys, you're missing an E from your name.
This is our administrator. You met Gary already, I assume?
We've talked.
Yes, yep. All right, so today we're going to go over the Comprehensive Plan, basically what the plan is and what it's for, and then we'll go through the update process, which has three phases, the investigation, development, and adoption phase, and then we'll quickly go over next steps. For the Comprehensive Plan overview, this is your long-range planning document. It should be your decision-making guide for any decisions. This document should be what you go to to kind of start your decision-making process, to remind you of the county's vision and your goals and strategies, and how those decisions will affect those. It is the community's vision for the next 10 to 15 years. It will showcase the assets and opportunities of the county. It is a guiding framework for your regulatory documents, and it is legally required by the Code of West Virginia. I do want to say it is not a regulatory document in itself, but it should guide all of your regulations. It's a policy document. And you do have this, what you see on the screen is a handout that's in your packet that has more information on it for you. So the Comprehensive Plan, first of all, we assess existing conditions, we establish vision and goals, and then set direction for future change, which comes down into strategies and implementation. The major components of the plan are a vision, which is set by you all and your community, planning principles, and then the plan elements and goals, which are basically the chapters, the kind of meaty chapters of the plan, and the strategies and the implementation plan. So those elements or topic chapters, it's largely land use, but land use is connected to everything else. So all of, all of these topics that you see on the screen will be major elements of the So this plan relates to your other plans and ordinances basically by being the overview or umbrella plan of everything else, and it affects your budget, your capital improvement program, your small area plans, resource preservation, strategic plans like economic development plans, all of those kind of more topical plans, and your subdivision ordinance and your other technical and design standards and regulations. So the reason we're updating it is because it's gotten dated, and your local vision and priorities have changed over time. The natural environment, the built environment has changed, and the strategies and goals need to be updated to set you on your course for the future. And it's also legally required by the state that you updated every 10 years. And while we're calling it an update, it's pretty much a rewrite. It's going to be a major project of rewriting the plan for you. Any questions at this point?
I too.
All right. So the update process we go through, we're here at our first joint work session, but we've been doing a lot of work in the background and up until now, which I'll go over as we move forward. But there's basically the first phase of investigation, where we start with today and go forward with community engagement. And then in July, we'll start the second phase of development, where we're actually drafting chapters, bringing them to the Planning Commission, and going through those chapters and moving through until we get to the end. Those work sessions will go for about six months, and then we'll come back to our adoption phase. We'll have another joint work session. We'll go through the full plan draft, review that, then we'll have an open house for the public, and then have a final joint work session where we go through any final revisions and get you ready for your public adoption.
Quick question, who's involved in the public work session?
The work sessions will be all the planning commissioners and yourself, and staff and Berkeley Group.
There will be public input through the work sessions, but there will be a, at a point where there will be a public input period?
Yeah, and I'll go over the public input opportunities, but all of those will be open to the public, but there won't be a public comment period. Those are really kind of for you all to really look at the plan and work on it. So we've come up with a format and design, working with your staff, created this logo for the process and the tagline. So whenever you see this branding, you'll know it has to do with the Comp Plan Update, and that also helps the community kind of recognize the branding when they're seeing it. We have a robust community engagement plan composed of these five main points. We're going to have two community drop-ins, we'll have a community survey, six focus groups, a community open house, and the website will be up and running throughout the process. So I'm going to delve into each of these a little deeper. We'll start next week with the first community drop-in, and then we'll have another one in May. One will be in the afternoon, the other in the evening, and these will be an open house style, just drop in, be engaged with what you're interested in. We'll have some interactive activities similar to what you see on the screen, and we will have our staff and your staff there, and people will go around and engage in the activities and talk with us and give us valuable feedback to do with the specific elements of the plan. The survey will run from April 5th to May 24th, and it'll be online. It's also available on paper. If anyone wants to pick up paper copies, they would be here in the planning office. And then the website will be running throughout the whole project, and we'll have updates, ways for people to get involved. The draft chapters and documents will be on there for people to read. There will be a sign-up for, if people want to get emails about meetings, and they can submit comments and questions throughout the whole process. And then the focus groups, what you see on the screen are the topics that we chose with staff, and they have invited specific people from your community to, who kind of fall under these topics. And we're going to sit down in roundtable discussions and facilitate discussions with them about their experiences in these fields, in this county, and how, what's going well, what's not going well, get their advice, input on the future, and really get good, deep discussion with them, and this gives us a lot of really good feedback for the Comprehensive Any questions about the focus groups?
I just have a question about the land use and development with not having zoning in the county. Typically, how, how much teeth or how much value is the Comp Plan with that? And helping the Planning Commission basically follow our guidelines that we already have as far as subdividing, but can you help me out a little bit there?
Not having zoning, your subdivision plan is really your main regulatory document. So the Comp Plan will speak to that and any change, any changes that ought to be made to the subdivision ordinance. It'll set out areas that you want to preserve, areas where you want growth. We'll do all the same things with the Comp Plan that we do with any Comp Plan for land use planning, it's just that you won't have that zoning ordinance for enforcing it. You'll need to use your subdivision plan and any other regulatory actions that you can take to kind of bring that land use vision to fruition.
In regards to that, have you all done any work in regards to spot zoning type situations?
I, myself, I have not done work with it. We try to avoid that, but someone in our company may have. If you have specific questions about it, I can ask others about that.
Well, we have, we have three of those in Berkeley County now.
Oh, oh, I see what you mean.
If it would be beneficial to pursue more or not, you know?
I see what you mean.
It'd be nice to get a perspective on that.
So you have some areas that have zoning, but they're limited areas.
One large development on west of 81 here, right across from Martinsburg. That's all residential, spot zone, the airport area, spot zone, so.
Okay. I was thinking of it, spot zoning in a different way, but that is something we definitely want to learn about and find out, if you all are interested in expanding zoning to the rest of the county or not.
I'm going to say this, because there's a big concern coming in West Virginia about data centers, okay? And how do you control that and where do you put them in the right places and all?
Right.
Without zoning, that's very difficult.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice to have some kind of plan on, if we get some in the future, where can we put them and how can we control that somewhat?
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be an important thing that we would need to know how to, in the future, as to how to address that issue. It's coming, I think.
Okay, that's good to know. That's something we will definitely, did you want to say something?
Yeah. Good morning. I was just going to add that a lot of counties don't necessarily have zoning regulations that address data centers and similar uses, but they have a set of policy guidelines specific to data centers in their Comprehensive Plan that, you know, they're obviously not regulatory, but they can serve as recommendations. So for example, we would want data centers to cite in this area of the county. We would want them to have, you know, these utility kind of guidelines so that infrastructure is already in place. We see that a lot with solar energy facilities as well, and you know, that can be something that you look to.
Solar parks, things another issue, you know?
Yes, sir. So that, you know, we might not be able to make a recommendation for how that's addressed through zoning, but we can kind of set some initial policies in your Comprehensive Plan so that your Planning Commission staff in particular kind of have that as a guiding framework when meeting with applicants.
Yeah, that was my next question, was about the solar, because, I mean, the solar farms are, you know, on the move and they're growing. Wind is probably not far behind them, and I don't think this county has any policies, any type of regulatory policies or anything in our planning policies to deal with solar farms or wind generation. And I'm looking at my people, we don't have anything to deal with solar or wind generation in this county, correct? We don't have any guidelines.
Not in our ordinances.
Not in our ordinances. And I think that that's something that needs to be a hard look at in, for ordinances for Berkeley County to deal with large solar farms or wind farms.
Okay, that's very good to know, and we can, we will definitely add that into the process and address those in the Comp Plan, and then that's kind of the basis you need to move forward with.
And data centers, of course.
Yeah, all three of those. So how do you all feel about zoning? Do you feel like it's the right time to introduce zoning to the county, or is it something you think is too much of a hot potato to even address?
I could tell you personally, I am not getting those calls from the constituents asking for zoning. So, you know, I won't be the one to bring it to the table until the public speaks out loudly, you know, for it.
It's been over 20 years ago since it was on the ballot, and it got defeated soundly, three to one type situation. A lot of people think there's enough people moved in here, that would change, but I, I mean, I don't think we have the, at least speaking for myself, the initiative to want to put it on the ballot again unless, but, and it's almost, in my mind, it's almost too late in the game in most areas. Now, there are some areas, that's why I asked about spot zoning, that we can protect some areas for certain things through that, as opposed to countywide, that, to me, would be beneficial. That, to me, would be beneficial to us.
Okay.
And I don't believe there's any appetite in this county for countywide zoning.
Okay.
I think that that question has been answered, has been asked before and has been answered loudly. You know, the only way that that would happen is if it was put on a referendum, but I don't think there's an appetite in this county for countywide zoning. I do think that there may be an appetite in this county for spot zoning, basically maybe kind of chasing the interstate and the water to try to protect some of those. But I think there's zero appetite for countywide zoning ordinance in this county right now.
Okay. Good to know. We will definitely address those.
I'm real big on, I believe it's wholeheartedly, nobody else has ever, but I don't think we should allow developments over 100-plus homes unless they have public water in sewer period. I mean, that's just me speaking. I'm tired of our utility boards having to pick up where they put in some makeshift septic, sewer treatment plant and then we have to end up taking it over and bailing it out and it's wrong. And I feel strongly about that. If there's no water in sewer there, then we shouldn't be approving these sites. We ought to have the power to do that.
Yeah. Absolutely. Are those all being developed as subdivisions?
Well, I don't know that there's been that many new ones recently. It was, it was historically in the past, it was a problem. We did a lot of those because.
So, yeah, most of the communities and neighborhoods that Mr. Kat was speaking to are on the west side of the county where the public utilities are not available.
Available.
There are a lot of older communities where that was done in the 70s, 80s that have prolonged issues.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. That's good, good input and we will definitely address those in the plan. And if you think of anything else, please send it along. All right. So this document is in your packet. Part of what we've done before coming here today is a diagnostic of your existing comprehensive plan. This is an important way that we gather the baseline data to begin planning. It evaluates your current comprehensive plan against your state code to find out what mandatory pieces of the code are in your plan, what are missing, what are the optional requirements that are in there and which ones should be added. And then we also compare it to the best practices by the American Planning Association for comprehensive planning. And if you haven't read this report, I strongly encourage you to read it. It'll give you a good education on where your plan is now and where we recommend going with it. These are the recommendations that are in that diagnostic, of course, to incorporate all the requirements of state code. And then to establish a shared community vision based on the public engagement that we're going to go through and your existing conditions and data. We need to highlight your goals, strategies, and actions to bring the vision to fruition and then have a logical structure with compelling text and graphics so that it's easier to read, funner to read than, than a lot of the old comp plans that are just black and white text. And we want to provide specific measurable goals and strategies that are organized in a clear and prioritized implementation plan. We have also gone on a tour of the county. Caroline and I went with, with your staff on a, on a countywide tour. We did department interviews with department heads from all your, from all of your departments. And those, the summary of that is in your packet today for you. That is not something we're going to put in the plan, but it helps us gather that, that data that we need. Any questions on that investigation phase of the update? Okay. So the second phase is the development phase and we are, we are putting together a community profile. This is your existing conditions. There's been a lot of data that the county has provided and then we will research and gather more data, analyze that, present it in a profile. And this will be a robust appendix to your plan. So rather than having all that data in every chapter, we're going to put all of this together into an appendix of the plan. Then for the chapter drafting, we will be drafting the chapters over the following months. There will be two chapters presented at each of the planning commission work sessions and strategies and implementation will be included with each of those chapters. And then at the very end of the plan, we will have one chapter that is all of the implementation steps for each strategy. And those will be prioritized. They will have the details of who's, who's responsible for that implementation, kind of a time goal for it and a general cost of what it may be. So your roles and responsibilities, we need you all to help us update the community about the project. You're the ones out there talking to your constituents. So please let them know, kind of have this top of mind, let them know the updates going on if they don't know. Let them know that there's a public engagement that they can get involved in. Listen to them, convey their concerns back to staff. If you send any, any comments or concerns you have, send them to Laura and then she will compile and send them to us on a regular basis. Stay abreast of the project and of course, you're going to have some homework. So for the planning commission, this means these six work sessions that you see on the slide. And before each of those work sessions, you're going to receive a packet that has the drafted chapters and an agenda and maybe some other things in it. But it's very important that the planning commission go through those chapters prior to the work session, jot down any questions, comments, concerns that you have so we can dig into those during our work sessions and get any advice for revisions that you have for those chapters. And then after that, each work session, you'll have a week. If you think of something else, you'll have a week to get that to Laura. She'll get it to us and we'll provide you with a comment sheet where you can compile all those. And then we will go back in and revise those chapters. As far as the commissioners go, all of you all, we're, we have already interviewed a couple of you. We're going to interview the other two today and get, get more information from you. As the liaison, John will be giving you updates after these work sessions to let you know what's going on. Staff will be updating you on the plan, but also the chapters will be available for you to read as well as we're drafting. So it's, it's a good success practice for you to go ahead and read those chapters. If you have concerns early on, please go ahead and send those to Laura so that when we get to the end of the process, you aren't seeing a document that you've never seen before and being asked to, to adopt it. So please read those chapters as we go. And like I said, send any substantive concerns to staff. And so what we will do is we'll have a work session with you all to see the final draft. Then we'll have an open house for the public where we'll set up another kind of drop-in open house for them to see parts of the plan, see the strategies, the implementation, and give us their input on that. And so these are the two final work sessions. Then we will bring all that input from the open house back to you. And you'll have another chance to give us any more revisions that, that you want to see made to the plan. And we will make all those revisions and then have a final draft to you for your public hearings and adoption in the fall of '26. Any questions about the adoption phase? And I forgot to mention something, Mr. Hardy, you were asking about the, the public engagement. After we go through the first phase with the survey, the two drop-ins and the focus groups, we will compile a, a big summary of all the public engagement, including all of the survey results and give those to you. So those will be available to all of you, but we will be going over that, presenting that in that first work session.
How are the surveys distributed?
They're mainly online. You can take them on your phone or a computer.
Are they emailed to people or are they through social media or how are they?
Yeah. So it's, it'll be a, a link to go to a webpage and fill out the survey. So we'll have the links on the Facebook page, our county website, we'll send it out to our listserv. And then I also spoke with Gretchen Frye from the libraries and she'll have physical copies and electronic links there for people to access it as well.
So we can share.
In all the libraries around the county?
Correct.
Yep.
So we can share those via social media for people to open those links to go in and, and be able to access those surveys?
Yeah. It's, yeah, it'll be a link. It'll be, like I said, it'll be on the county website as well, on our comprehensive plan page. And anybody can reach out to us if they can't find the link, but we're going to do our best, obviously, get it out to everybody.
We can share those with our local Rotary Clubs and all the different organizations that we're involved with for people, for the, for the community to have as much input as possible.
Absolutely. Yep. And that was what I was going to say on my next slide is please help us get the word out. You should have a flyer in your packet. If not, Laura could get you some of these flyers. You can send this QR code. You can text it, email it, put it on your social media. The more community input we have, the better plan that we'll have. So please do help us get the word out. We do take all of the input seriously and we present that to you and it is a big part of what guides the plan. Any other questions about that? Okay. All right. So I want to thank you for your time and attention. Feel free to contact us anytime if you have a question and we look forward to working with you over the next year and a half or so.
What community are you from?
I'm from Blacksburg. I grew up in Blacksburg, Virginia.
Virginia Tech.
Yes. My father was a.
And what, so what was, were you on the tour as well here?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I was on the tour.
Both of you?
Uh-huh.
All right. I want to know your impression of Berkeley County right now.
So this was my first time, or not today, but the tour was the first time that I had visited Berkeley County. I did not know admittedly much about the county before I came on the tour. I really enjoyed the tour, the degree, putting it together. I think there are a lot of great things that the county has going for it and a lot of potential that is maybe kind of dormant right now or maybe it's kind of starting to be evaluated. And so I am personally really excited, truly, for the comp plan update, to be able to work with people to kind of recognize these assets and celebrate them a bit more in the comp plan and kind of see how they can, the potential can be realized moving forward.
Are you from Blacksburg as well?
No, sir. I'm from Harrisonburg.
Harrisonburg.
Rockingham County.
Okay. That's even a bigger place, so, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Harrisonburg's a beautiful place, a beautiful city, town.
It is.
Awesome.
It is. The valley's beautiful.
And tell these folks how, how influenced the Battlefield Foundation is down through that area, how great it is. Tell them, tell them so they understand.
Don't get you on the spot or anything.
New market especially, but just tell them how, what an impact that has on those communities down there.
Huge, huge impact. Rockingham County, where I live, Augusta County, Newmarket, Shenandoah County, Frederick County, all up and down the valley and into Northern Virginia as well. The battlefields are very well preserved. They serve as tourist attractions, especially when coupled with other attractions, so.
And this needs to be a part of this plan, okay? It needs to be, it needs to be a part of this plan. Absolutely.
A northern gateway to the Shenandoah Valley.
But one of the, one of the challenges that we're going to find and one of the challenges that you're going to find from our public input is, is West Virginia is like not many other states where it's very centrally controlled. Counties, us as a body, we do not have, we don't have oversight over our roads at all, right? We don't have the money for roads. All that is done through the state. The state controls entrance permits, exit permits. They control what roads get paved, what roads get turn lanes. And sometimes it makes no sense. And I'm sure you've talked with them and we have areas where new developments go in and it completely makes sense to have a de-acceleration lanes, to have turn lanes, to have something like, and if DOH says, nah, you don't need it, you don't get it. So there's one of the challenges that you're going to find is Berkeley County is going to struggle with transportation, with roads, right? It's the big, it's one of the biggest complaints that I get. Well, they're putting this new 700, 700 home development here. They got their DOH entrance permit, but they're going to do nothing to the road. They're not going to upgrade the road. They're not going to do anything to the road. We have no control over that. So that's going to be one of the biggest keys that you're going to get from the public is traffic, transportation issues, new roads, enlarging the roads that we do have, new exits on the interstate or new strategies to get on and off the interstate. I'm sure you've been out at exit, is it exit 12? It's out there by Lowe's. I mean, it's, they're out of easements, there's no place else to go. There has to be something to control that. Route 9 West, heading towards Hedgesville, it's a nightmare trying to get out of Hedgesville in the morning and trying to get home in the evenings. And all those things are things that this county has no control over. So we, you know, so that's going to be one of the major factors that you're going to hear from the community is transportation and availability of new and creative ways to be able to get around the county.
You're going to hear roads, schools, and healthcare, all of which we have no control over whatsoever, zero. So.
Yeah. West Virginia has a monopoly on healthcare and they have an antiquated system where they, and I'm, and I'm speaking politically here, I'm not speaking for this body. I'm speaking for John Hardy. But we have an antiquated healthcare system where the healthcare system is controlled by the couple of major players in the state. And we couldn't get another hospital here if we wanted to because they'd have to have permission from the hospital that's here. So it's a pretty antiquated system and people do not have access to the healthcare that they need in this county.
Yeah. And we understand that you're one of the few counties in West Virginia that's growing rapidly and, and really has a need for all of that.
We have very unique challenges and we do not have, we have the support of our local state officials. I'm hopeful that we will have the support of our new governor who is an Eastern Panhandle resident. But this county has very special challenges that no other counties in this state have or very few have. And it's very hard to have a very centralized government that one size fits all, which does not.
Work.
Does not work for Berkeley County. And I can say that because I was in the state house for six years and I saw it, so.
Right.
You're correct in saying there's a few counties that are growing, but there's only one that's growing rapidly and you're looking at it, okay?
Yeah. Right.
Only one that's growing rapidly.
Right. And a lot of these challenges we're seeing in Virginia as well, we have a very different government structure there, but we're not new to the issues. So we will dig in and, and I, I think it's important to highlight those issues in your comp plan, even if you don't have control over them.
I think that's very important. I think it's very important that we develop a very strong solar, wind. We need to make sure that we have those policies in place.
Right.
So at least we have something to work off of. And we'll talk further in our interview process.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's valuable information.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah. Thank you. We're, we're happy to be here.
I might add, you're very easy to speak with, you're very easy to talk to, so that, that helps.
Thank you.
Us also. So thank both of you for that.
Thank you.
And we actually understand what you're saying, so thank you.
Unfortunately, that's not common these days.
That's what I was thinking. Okay. Let's go bring us to the end of our meeting. Are there any items from the public? Like the record showed, there is nobody here. We have new recess.
We need for executive session today?
Yeah. Need a motion to recess.
Mr. President, I move that we recess.
We are in recess.